Good morning and welcome to the May 7th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'm going to ask that you silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chamber. And the Commission now utilizes speaker request forms. If you'd like to speak on a particular item, please complete a speaker request form located in the bookshelves at the back of the chamber and return it to the Commission Manager, Holly Hennies, up here on the lower right of the dais. At this time, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Hadcock to lead us in a moment of silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Second.
I got a first by Drews and a second by Lassiter. All in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item number five, I'm going to recognize Sheriff Brian Mueller. National Corrections Officers Week, recognition, May the 5th through the 11th. Brian?
Good morning, Commission. Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff. I appreciate you giving us a few minutes of your time this morning. As you know, Pennington County staff truly is the best of the best in all of our divisions. So it's always exciting when we get a week like this and we get to recognize certain members of our staff for the outstanding work that they do. And we have a lot going on this week. This week is National Corrections Week. We have over 220 correction staff between the jail and the juvenile services center. Many of them are represented here today. And we, it's also National Nurses Week. We have 22 full-time, full-time, part-time equivalent medical staff that work for us in Pennington County, some at the jail, some at the juvenile services center, and some at the care campus. And it's also Teacher Appreciation Week. So we have three teachers that work full-time for us at the juvenile services center. And as you know, last month, you approved us adding a teacher to the jail that'll start here with the Ignite program here in June. So we have a lot going on, and you get to hear me talk a lot. So I'm going to invite Commander Yantis and Commander Geteras up here. We're going to introduce the staff that we have today, let them introduce themselves, and then the commanders are going to visit with you just for a little bit about National Corrections Week. And I just want to reiterate, yesterday, I appreciate Commissioner Roskine and Commissioner Lassiter coming over to the jail to get to eat tacos with our staff and do a tour. I'd invite any of the rest of you, if you want to do a tour of the jail sometime in the next couple of weeks, please reach out. We'd love to take you through there. I have to offer that up legally at least once a year for you to come through there. So I'd like you to come over and do that at your convenience, but if you want to reach out and let me know. And then tomorrow, you've all been invited out to the juvenile services center. Joe, are we eating tacos?
We're having tacos and...
That's awesome. So they're having something different to eat each day, but we've timed it perfect so you guys can eat tacos again with us tomorrow if you come out to the juvenile services center and take a tour. And again, I know if you're not able to make that, just reach out and we'll get you all through there. So I'll turn it over to the commanders. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Good morning. Joe Geteras, Commander, Juvenile Services Center, 13 years. Appreciate you recognizing us today, and please come over tomorrow for our all-staff luncheon. So we invite you over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob Yantis, Commander, the Pennington County Jail. And I'm going to invite all of our staff, if you'd stand and come up, please introduce yourselves.
I'm Terrell Bowman, Correctional Officer out at JSC. Special duty assigned to home detention right now. I've been with the Sheriff's Office for about three years.
I'm Peyton Swagon. I've been at JSC for five years, and I'm a special duty assigned as the federal case manager.
James Malire, Sergeant. I've been with Pennington County for six years.
Lauren Gary, Sergeant. Been in JSC for 16 years.
Lieutenant John Martin. Been with JSC for 14 years.
Lieutenant Heather Wood. Been at JSC for 27 years.
Good morning. Lieutenant Ken Wilson. Been with Adult Corrections for 21 years.
Morning. My name is Wade Anderson. I'm the Security Captain at the Pennington County Jail, and I've been with the Sheriff's Office for 17 years.
Name is Joseph Edwards. I'm Sergeant over at the jail. Been there for 14 years.
Andy Darrow. With the jail. I've been there for 18 years, and I'm the Programs Officer. Thank you.
Casey Ballard. I'm a Booking Officer over at the jail. Eight years.
Nice hair.
Patty Brooks. I'm a Booking Tech. Been there 11 years.
Kyle Heck. Currently the Trustee Officer, and I'm with the Pennington County Jail for about four years.
Yeah, I'm Rob Yantis. I'm the jail commander. I've been there for 16 years, and I just want to read something for you this morning. So on May 5th, 1984, President Ronald Reagan issued Proclamation 5187, National Correctional Officers Week, in which he called upon officials of state and local governments and the people of the United States to observe the contributions of correctional officers and employees serving in the corrections profession. He said that the professionalism, dedication, and courage exhibited by corrections officers in their performance of demanding and often conflicting roles deserves our nation's utmost respect and honor. It is a privilege to stand before you today to honor the brave men and women in corrections who serve this community continually. They are commissioned as guardians and stewards behind walls where few will ever venture. They ensure that our community's confinement is safe, secure, orderly, and disciplined while providing dignity and compassion for our neighbors who cannot currently be free in our community. Correction staff often accept people at their worst, protect them against their own choices, give care and counseling, provide food, clothing, and shelter. They watch and protect, enforce rules and discipline, all while guiding, inspiring, and facilitating growth through education and positive influence. Correction staff endure misplaced anger and violence. They're witness to every aberrant behavior that humans can conceive. They are often misunderstood and challenged by ignorance and prejudice. And even though they're surrounded every day by the reality of human failure, they have the character and grit to go home at the end of every shift to their own families and loved ones and to navigate their own lives with goodness and strength. The way in which we confine our neighbors is the truest testament to our national decency. In a civilized society, confinement is the primary means of immediate control, corrective action, and the imposition of justice. The correctional staff of the Pennington County Sheriff's Office pursue that task with virtue and nobility. In the category of heroes, they are prominent. Thank you for giving us an audience to honor them today.
Chair.
Thank you. Brian, did anybody else want to speak? I just, I think myself and the Commission, we just want to thank you for your dedication, your professionalism to Pennington County. The tour of the jail was kind of an eye-opener for me yesterday. There's just so many components to that, all the way from the medical facility that you have in the jail, and then you got the laundry and all the different categories that would be directly related to the risk of the folks that are incarcerated. Kitchen is awesome. The only kitchen I've seen larger than that was on an aircraft carrier. Anyhow, I think what we'd like to do is get everybody up here.
Chair, I'd like to speak.
Excuse me.
Thank you. So I've known a lot of you many years. I've been here many years with you. You are our heroes. You are the people behind the scenes that make that difference for you, for us. There's a lot of respect and honor in our, in our commission and from our team and our other employees for what you guys do. That's a lot of work. It's a lot of dedication. And like they say, sometimes you see the worst of the worst, but sometimes you make that difference. You make that difference because you've been here a long time and you've seen what can happen when you have positive influence or you have positive people working in the corrections facilities. So I've always respected and honored you guys, and you've always been my heroes. All first responders in Pennington County or the city or the state have just done above and beyond. And today, it's about you guys, the teachers, the medical staff, and all of you that have made that difference. And I'm pretty proud to know all of you and been serving with a lot of you for a long time and watching you grow and watching you do what you do for our community and our corrections facilities. So thank you again for serving us and serving our community.
Any other Commissioner like to speak?
I always just want to thank you for your commitment to the county. We really appreciate it. I know this is a small representation of all of those that are involved in this, but in listening to Rob explain the various people that we have, it's really a diversified group, including the health side of it, and appreciate what you do and your dedication to it. Thank you.
Just want to say thanks for the tour yesterday. Thanks for giving a good showing of what you guys do, and can't thank you more than enough for what you have to deal with each and every day, seeing some of those inmates over there. So thank you.
So before we come up and take photos, I just want to wish Rob good luck in his new venture. I heard that he is done with the Sheriff's Department around the end of July, so we really thank you for your service, and we'll do a photo out now. I'm sure he'll lean. We'll take care of the photos.
Long time, Rob.
Well, you sit back.
Yes, go front.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so in on the end. I'm short, so I'll... Okay, so we can make it, but you're kind of small. Okay, so in the back row, could you guys come up on your toes? Okay, guys, ready? One, two, tall, smile. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Yep, you bet.
Looking forward to it.
The look watch, right?
Yep, coming over tomorrow.
I may be there.
Okay.
My schedule goes.
Got it on my calendar, so.
Yeah, hope you come in.
Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda, and at this time, I'll recognize Holly Hennies.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items are removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approve of the minutes from the regular meeting of April 16th, 2024. Number seven is to approve the renewals of the following retail on-off sale Montgivers and South Dakota Farm Y licenses and to release the licenses upon payment of appropriate property taxes. Billy Bob Smoke Shack, BJ's Country Store, Highway 16, Black Hills Helicopters, Inc., Black Hills Reception and Rentals, Black Hills Speedway, Corner Pantry #21, Corner Pantry License #RB-25294, Corner Pantry #21, License #RB-24086, Corner Pantry Moon Meadows, Country Store at Three Forks, Dollar General Store #15207, Happy Holidays RV Resort, Hard Ranch Capping Resort, Hard Ranch Golf Course, High Country Guest Ranch, Horse Creek Resort, Horse Thief Campground, Johnson's Hiding General Store, Larson's Crooked Creek Resort, Mexico Typical, Moonshine Gulch Saloon, Mountain Meadows Store and Campground LLC, Mount Rushmore Concessions, Mount Rushmore KOA, Pactola Pines Marina, Putzing Glow, Roster J Bar Ranch and Campground, Reptile Gardens, Roachford Mall, Rockerville Lodge and Cabins LLC, Rushmore Candy Company LLC, Rushmore Cave LLC, The Marine at Sheridan Lake, Sick and Twisted Brewing Company, Sobos LLC, Summer Creek Inn, Under Canvas Inc., Valley Square Casino, Valley Square Sports Pub, and Whispering Pines Campground. Number eight is to acknowledge the filing of petitions as application for incorporation of the proposed Cavern Road South Road District by the voters within the proposed district boundaries. Number eight is to authorize the chair's signature for the Order of Organization and Corporation for the Darlington Estates Road District with the following legal description: lots 1 through 6 inclusive, lot 7R, lot 8R, lots 9 through 18 inclusive, all located within the Darlington Estates subdivision. Number 10 is to approve the first half of the 2024 budgeted operating transfers from the general fund. E911 Fund in the amount of $477,782, Emergency Management Fund in the amount of $89,213, the 24/7 Fund in the amount of $39,813. Number 11 is to acknowledge the disinternment permit, number 1579915. Number 12 is to approve the chair's signature on letters to the South Dakota Congressional delegation encouraging support of the full authorization of the payment in lieu of taxes program funding. Number 13 is to declare 1 HP Office Jet Pro X576DW MPF copier as surplus for the purpose of disposal as submitted by equalization. Number 14 is approval of the adopt a highway application for a portion of Highway 1416 by the Air Force Sergeants Association. And finally, number 15 is to authorize the auditor's office to issue payment of the $1 million donation received to West River Mental Health Pivot Point, courtesy of the Leona M. and Harry B. Helmsley Charitable Trust.
Thank you, Holly. At this time, are there any members from the public that would comment, want to comment on the consent agenda or have any items removed? If not, I'll go back to the Commission. Are there any Commissioners that would like to have an item removed? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Take it.
Got a first by Drews and a second by Lassiter. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On item 16, and I'll recognize, this would be the request for funding from Western Dakota Regional Water System, and at this time, I'll recognize Cheryl, Dr. Cheryl Chapman, Executive Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me today to, yes, regard funding, but also update you on the progress with Western Dakota Regional Water. First, an introduction of our Board of Directors. Our board is comprised of... Our board is comprised of representatives from organizations who deliver drinking water to all kinds of citizens throughout western South Dakota. And I would just acknowledge Mayor Teresa Hall. I believe this is her last day as mayor. She did not run for reelection, but we understand that the city is taking a discussion to have her continue on the board, which we would greatly welcome. But as you can see, there's a wide range of representation from large to small communities as well as rural water systems, such as Butte Mead Sanitary District and West River Lyman Jones. I wanted to bring you an update from South Dakota Mines. You might recognize this particular graph. We've used it on several occasions, and I believe you have a handout of this as well that might be easy to see. What we have seen in this particular information is just compiling all the data that's out there about water availability and demand for that water. When we have average precipitation conditions, that's represented by that middle green line. When we have very wet years, we're at the top with high water availability. But it's that very dry period at the red line, drought conditions, that really caught our attention and got work underway for this project because we saw that the demand represented by the solid black line with actual numbers and back four years ago, a dashed line projecting demand, that had we had drought in 2020, that there would be a deficit of water availability. And he's in this day, then different kinds of conservation measures would kick in. But nevertheless, it was that shortage of water that is the potential during drought conditions that has initiated these efforts. What the school mines did last summer, however, is take some of the new census data and take a look at, for example, what does 2% growth, not the average growth that was projected earlier, but what does that look like for water availability? And what we see then is instead of the year 2120, when average conditions meet average demand, got shrunk 60 years. And so at a 2% growth rate, which is where we are in the greater Rapid City area right now, it is showing that that availability matches in the year 2060. All to say, that is why we continue to work in, in high speed, if you will, with all efforts to try and continue to move this project along. And certainly, your support in both funding and talking about this project throughout our communities has played a big role in that. Sometimes we get a question about, do we have enough water in the Missouri River? And how we are blessed as a state to have this amazing resource known as the Missouri River. We went and took a look at the very lowest flows during the driest periods of water availability in the Missouri River. And coming into South Dakota is almost 7,000 million gallons a day and leaving about 11.5 million gallons a day. And yet, some of our earliest studies showed that if all the people in western South Dakota use Missouri River water for drinking water, it would be only 38 million gallons a day, 0.6% of what's available. And not all the water in the river is for drinking water. There are eight authorized purposes: hydro, power, recreation, and so forth. But certainly, you can see there's a lot of water available for drinking water in western South Dakota. And it's a long process. We're in the shaded area of some of those early studies, and our biggest effort right now is doing a feasibility study to make sure that it is technically and economically feasible to move water from the Missouri River to western South Dakota. But as you can see, once feasibility is done, we have to continue to raise funds for this, go through design, right-of-way acquisitions, environmental clearances, design and construction. But as I said, we are moving out as quickly as possible. Our engineering team that we were able to get because of some of the American Rescue Plan Act dollars is AE2S, KLJ, both of whom have offices here in Pennington County, and Black and Beach. One of the tasks, as I mentioned in our feasibility study, is to really do good data collection. And you can see all of the circles on the map represent water systems, some large, some small. And as you may have seen before, we have found that there are many, many small water systems in western South Dakota. And in just the five counties listed here, including Pennington, there's about 350 small systems. And so we are looking at ways to bring bulk water to western South Dakota, but at the same time, we're looking at how we can serve all of the small systems throughout the Black Hills in particular. And I'm sure you've met many of those system operators and owners who have their challenges with their individual water systems. Oftentimes, one well, one pump, and working hard to make sure they have continuous service to their customers. Fortunately, we were able this last winter to work with Elevate, who got a National Science Foundation grant, to study challenging community problems. And with that came funding for some interns. We advertised with the help of Elevate, and we had our A Team, as we called it, Ava, Annika, and Ashley. They were fantastic science and engineering students from South Dakota Mines. In fact, Ava just graduated this weekend with a degree in civil engineering. We worked to bring them up to speed on how does the drinking water program work? How does it work within the Black Hills? You can see our speakers here. And so the interns are working on finalizing a Phase 1 report, which identifies all of the small systems and gives us a sense of where they are, how much water is needed for each one of those. I like to mention this because I think this work serves the people in rural Pennington County directly in helping to find ways in the future of providing redundancy for quality water for all of the citizens living in those areas. We keep our eye on the weather, and this is the most recent drought map we have. We can see, early spring, even with the rain we have, they're starting to creep in a little drought in the northwestern part of the state. We did have NOAA have a webinar with us, and it appears that we may be having a wet spring. That's what they're forecasting through June, and it's always a little bit of a sigh of relief when we see that. But we know too that the variability is high for our area. We have also asked USGS to provide an independent study, and some of the funding that we have for our project is to pay for them to do this scientific work. You might all recall the Black Hills hydrology study, now over 25 years old, that really assessed the current conditions of water availability and demand for both surface and groundwater in the Black Hills. And with the funding that they are receiving with us, they are taking a look to extend that period of time. And we see that it's been a wetter period than it was during the initial study, but also the range has reduced. But what a range it is, almost 20 times difference from the driest period of water availability to recharge the aquifers to the wettest times. And as we might imagine, the consumptive use or the demand on those waters has increased as well. One of the next parts of this study USGS is doing is really taking a look at the aquifers in the greater Black Hills area. And you can see nine different segments that they'll be studying. One, early on, I got a question that just indicated that there was a conception that there was equal water availability throughout the aquifers. And we are certain that is not the case, and so we're looking at each of these areas. Pennington County will be predominantly in that area four, and through now, through the end of the year, we'll be learning more about the recorded data and availability of information that'll help us continue to make decisions during our feasibility work. there was equal water availability throughout the aquifers. And we are certain that is not the case. And so we're looking at each of these areas. Pennington County will be predominantly in that area four. And through now, through the end of the year, we'll be learning more about the recorded data and availability of information that'll help us continue to make decisions during our feasibility work. On September 1st, we had been operating under a subcontract, the organization. And on September 1st, we opened our first office. It's an office in the Creamery across from Pier Bean. And have our first two part-time employees, myself as executive director and Katie Leclerc as operations manager. Our funding has been very positive story, we believe. Way over on the left, you can see that our estimated cost of the feasibility study is $13 million. We have identified, and that includes doing outreach like this today, about 12.7 million now. And to go through that, early on, we received 8 million of the 600 million ARPA funds that were approved in the legislature in 2022. And thanks to your help, as well as other local partners, we were able to raise over $300,000 for matching funds for the $1 million, what we call Swarms Grant as well. No match required on ARPA, but a one to four match required on Swarms. This year, we also were approved for a second $1 million grant in Swarms. Again, the match is required, and that's what we're working on to date, and 175,000 has been raised so far. But we also received word that of the leftover, if you will, ARPA funding that was approved in the legislature this year for water projects, we are on tap to get about 2.2 million of that. We're very excited, no match required. And that gets us, as you can see, well on our way to funding the feasibility study. And several members have joined as well. This membership represents over $28,000 in additional revenue for us. And Class One and Two members are those organizations who sell and deliver water to customers. But others like yourself, associate members, are in support of this and as well as supporting members. And thank you again, Commissioner Drews, for your individual support. The members who are in Class One and Two are the voting members of the organization. Board members are elected annually. One of the things we started this year were two quarterly briefings. One is for members. It is a more of a business briefing, if you will, a deep dive into some of the workings of the board. And then we have technical briefings. I mentioned NOAA was the speaker for us not long ago. And I know various members of you have logged into those one-hour webinars and appreciate your interest in keeping up to date with that information. And so today, our request is similar to what you approved in 2022, $50,000. And again, this is for the matching funds for our Swarms Grant. And would appreciate your favorable consideration of that request. We have not actually received that funding yet. We're anticipating it really any time. And so getting that funding request anytime in the calendar year 2024 would be very much appreciated. And then we have our fourth annual meeting coming up, Thursday, September 5th, over at the Box in Box Elder. And as in previous years, we'll start about 9 o'clock in the morning. Will be an educational session, followed by lunch, and then early afternoon, the business meeting. And there is no cost to this, but we do like to have folks sign up for that. So thank you for your time today. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Chair.
So Cheryl, I got a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
So you're asking for this funding in 2024?
Yes.
You can't wait until 2025, when we can have our budget hearings and maybe allocate it during those budget hearings for 2025?
Well, I can certainly take a look at that, sure.
And the reason why I'm asking that is because we only have about $100,000 in contingency funds. And if I understand, this would come out of the contingency fund. And then that would put us at about $50,000 left for the rest of the year, which is about seven and a half months. And I'm not comfortable with that. I'm supporting the project. You and I had face-to-face conversation and visited on it. The project, I think, is a good project. We need, you know, we need to secure water. But I'd feel way more comfortable planning it out in our budget rather than utilizing contingency funds this early in the year, from my perspective. So I don't know where it's going to go, but if there's a vote to pay today, I just can't support coming out of our contingency fund this early in the year.
So just from a timing perspective, our goal is to have the feasibility done in 2026. And so the Swarms that was just approved this year, which we're working on getting that match for, we will be using into next year as well. So obviously, we'll be happy to work with the timing that works best for the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the commission want to speak on that?
Mr. Chair. So Dr. Chapman, appreciate the effort that's gone into raising the local funds for match dollars. I think you've done a good job. You've reached out to larger area of the community that this would impact, and you've done very well in doing that. So I know that's appreciated when the State Department of DNR looks at the applications coming in. That does play a role. They may not require those dollars, but it does play a role in their decisions, I believe. If not openly, it certainly does as they look at it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Chair.
Commissioner Hattcock?
I also believe in this project. And you know, from the beginning, infrastructure is huge. 2010, we had a drought basically going on when I was on the city council, where resources for water were very critical. So yes, I saw your chart, and it was right in between there, so I do remember that. So I would hope that the funding source for our budget, we'd put this in there again, make sure that this county is represented that way. I also see you have a next quarterly technical, July 12th, that new tribal water law, Mark Van Norman. Just had a meeting with him last week, and then he just came over last night for supper with his mom. So he was telling me about some of this tribal water law. He's been all over Washington DC and all over, represents the seven tribes. So I appreciate you putting him on your schedule. And I think he'll represent, well, I really like the way he speaks when he talks about the tribal stuff. When Kristi Noem had come to the meeting with the seven tribes, I was there that day. And he was representing, and he's very professional. So seeing what he has to say, and I think is a lot, and what he knows will really represent him. He might need some of the tribal lands and stuff to agree. And I think you couldn't have found a better person to represent. But the funding source for 50,000 is good. You got 12.7 you need for feasibility study. That's huge, but it's going to be something for water, which is huge across the state. So I think us being a part of that is good. Katie Leclerc, operations manager, very efficient and effective. So she has, if you want to get something done, you hire Katie. So you have a great representative group. You have a great operations manager. Cheryl, you're well on your way. And again, for your funding source, I would hope we bring this and you come to the budget hearing and we get that money for you because, like I said, infrastructure is well represented here. And I've always liked what you do, and I like what you get done for our community and our state. So thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Cheryl. I got to, if you could go back to Slide 8, I do have a question there.
Okay.
That's the number of water systems in Butte, Custer, Lawrence, and Meade, Pennington County?
Yes.
But you can see that Pennington County has roughly three times Meade and Custer, and double that of Lawrence. My question is, those water systems, are they actually tapping into an aquifer? Or some of those are actually just in some fissions?
Well, that's part of what we're studying right now. What is their source of water? There's different aquifers, as we're learning with the help of USGS. Some are in alluvium and not actually drilling through hard rock to get to water supplies as well. And so it's a variety of sources of water and that sort of thing. And what we're seeing is that it's a real localized effort. All the subdivisions, as you're well aware, have really taken it upon themselves to make sure that whoever lives in those areas has water. And so working together with those groups is just at its beginning stages to really take a look at that. But they have right now, like a permit with the state of South Dakota to do that water delivery and things like that as well. So.
So the Roland Hills Water System, which is located off Highway 44, I know that they're pulling out of Rapid Creek, so would they be considered a water system as well?
Yes. Yeah. And there are some that do surface water. I would say the vast majority are groundwater.
Okay. And, you know, I'm of the belief that I'd rather be proactive than reactive when it comes time to not have enough water to provide services to the folks of Pennington County. With that said, is there any member from the public that would like to speak on this topic? If not, I would ask the commission for, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair. I actually have a motion, and it would be to direct funding request to be included in the 2025 budget submission.
Thank you.
I got a motion by Commissioner Lassiter and a second by Commissioner Hattcock. This time, we'll go ahead and vote. So all in favor?
I was going to give a reason.
I'll go ahead.
I just, you know, like I said, Cheryl, I support this project, but I think it's better to be put into our budgeting so we can better formulate that. Because again, with seven and a half months left of the year, there's no telling what we could potentially have to use our contingency funding for. And I personally feel more comfortable putting it in the budget and then having it allocated through the budget process. And so that's the reason why I made that budget. But thank you very much for coming and giving a presentation.
Thank you.
And I agree. I think, you know, we're only a couple of months away from doing that budget. So it's not like we're saying no. We're just saying we'd like to do our due diligence and put this in a timeframe that would be same time that we do the budget. And I think that's going to be May 24th and 25th, if I recall. So any other questions before we vote? Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next, items from the auditor, and then I'll recognize Cindy Mueller.
Good morning, Commissioner Cindy Mueller, Pennington County Auditor. The first item that I have is the application for a new retail on-off sale wine and cider license for HICOW Company DBA Rafter Jbar Ranch.
Relative to that motion, is there any member of the audience that'd like to speak on that? If not, I'll come back to the commission. I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lassiter.
Move to approve the new license for retail on-off wine and liquor, wine and cider license for HICOW Company DBA Rafter Jbar Ranch.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Cindy.
And we also have two transfers today from Firehouse Wine Cellars to Billy Bob Smoke Shack. That's a retail on-off sale malt beverage with South Dakota Farm Wine License.
Are there any members from the public that would like to speak on this particular topic? If not, back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I've moved to approve the transfer of retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License from Firehouse Wine Cellars under Fat Boys Inc. to Billy Bob Smoke Shack under Corey Carter.
Second.
I got a motion, a second. Motion made by Drews, seconded by Commissioner Hattcock. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And the next transfer we have is of a retail on-sale liquor license with Sunday sales from Sweetgrass Bed and Breakfast Shipwreck Barn Grill under Grade A Enterprises LLC to Sweetgrass Inn Shipwreck Barn Grill under A Dub Adventures Inc.
Thank you, Cindy. Any members of the public that'd like to speak on this particular motion? And if not, I'll go back to the commission.
I'd make that motion also.
Motion by Drews and seconded by Commissioner Hattcock. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
On to item 18, items from the sheriff. I'll recognize Sheriff Mueller.
Good morning again, Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff. And I brought our HR manager, Nikki Farrar, up to help explain this just a little bit. We're pretty excited to be in front of you today to ask for authorization to add this sheriff's office interim position to our organization. Nikki was very instrumental in going out, meeting with the National Fraternal Order of Police Executive Team, talking about the struggles that we've had with recruitment and retention in law enforcement and corrections, and came up with a really outside-of-the-box idea to develop this intern program to bridge the gap between our younger generation and until you're 20, 21 years old, able to be in corrections. And so she received funding through the Department of Justice COPS program to support this. So we'll have funding to support this intern program. But I just wanted Nikki to talk briefly about what we're hoping to accomplish with this intern position.
Yeah, good morning. Nikki Farrar, HR manager for the Pennington County Sheriff's Office. So this is a micro grant through the Department of Justice. We are also working in collaboration with the National Fraternal Order of Police, the FOP. And like Brian said, it is to bridge the gap between the ages of 18 and 21. We're working within our sheriff's office to build a pipeline. We've noticed that high school students at the age of 18 are finding other careers in between the age of 18 and 21 when they can, when they're eligible to be a deputy or officer in the state of South Dakota. We, what we're doing right now with this internship program, this will be a 12-week internship program over the summer. We're going to do it in different phases. But we have four different divisions in the sheriff's office. We have the jail, juvenile services center, sheriff's office, and addiction treatment. The purpose of this grant in particular is to get people excited about our career field. So that is really what we're using this program for. Each division will get the opportunity to have the interns come and shadow and work a little bit within that two-week rotation. After they are done, we hope to add additional phases to the internship program. And either, they're going through the same pre-employment, pre-employment training that all of our employees go through. So at the end of this internship, we can offer them employment, or we can keep them on as interns. But it's really to keep that flow of talent between the ages of 18 to 21, to get them where they want to be.
Thank you.
Chair.
Commissioner Hattcock?
So I'm, I think this is a great way to recruit, Ms. Nikki. So how did you come up with the base pay of 1803?
1803 is, we looked at the national average of what we're, interns are looking for. They're obviously looking for paid internships. They're a little bit more enticing to them, but also you can go work at McDonald's or a gas station here for about that much. A lot of them are, that's kind of where we came up with it. We put it lower than where a lot of our entry-level positions are for our inmate security officer because those are obviously full-time employees. We want to make sure that we're not stepping on toes there. But that's, that's how we came up with that figure.
That's why I asked you that, because of the base pay, and then you have new people there. And if it's close to that, and you're doing a 12-week program, do they get benefits?
No benefits. They're part-time, non-benefiting. Yep. And they'll be temporary also.
So basically, you did arrange comparables and market analysis through, kind of like what you've been doing for the other groups, and then making sure you don't cause compression or disparity, as we call it. I appreciate that. Again, I think it's something that for internship, internship, it shows people or the younger generation, kind of. generation kind of what they might be looking at for the future. They also, we have a lot of people, if you saw in corrections today, that have been with us a long time. So them meeting the people they work with, and obviously that been around a long time, will be good mentors for them. So thank you for answering my questions, Ms. Nikki.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Drews.
So Nikki, thanks for using your creativity and coming up with a way to resolve a potential issue. It's not a potential issue, it's an issue. But maybe resolving that particular issue. So, so thank you for that, and now that you've done that, we'll continue to count on you for coming up with other ideas of how to better serve too. So thank you. I know this is above and beyond what your normal scope of responsibilities probably were, but thanks for doing this.
One badge, one team. That's what we say. Thank you.
Any other members of the commission want to speak? I might just add that I'm looking at the job description and, you know, this is going to be some, it isn't just a rubber stamp on this, there's some pretty, a lot of diversity in that position, so.
Absolutely. We're also going to use these positions to actually augment some work that we need to do too, so they'll get a benefit out of it. Pennington County is going to get a big benefit out of it also. We'll be able to augment some of the work, shift work that we, where we're having trouble filling positions right now with some of these too, so.
Nice.
Well, thank you for your work on this. Any members from the public want to speak on this? If not, I'll go back to the commission for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Drews. I second. Commissioner Haddock?
Thank you for bringing this forward to the public, Brian. It's good for them to know about it. So I will approve, move to approve new position of sheriff's office intern DBM 21, base pay 1803, hourly to authorize human resource to update the position listing.
Seconded by, motion made by Commissioner Haddock, seconded by Drews. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
I have something to say.
Go ahead.
Thank you for bringing this forward, and why I meant by that is the public wants to know what's going on. You don't mean that mean, I mean that in a positive. When you guys are doing programs and you're doing grants and you're working to improve Pennington County, this makes a huge difference for your public to know. And I think this is pretty amazing. Again, I believe you went above and beyond to make sure your department, your sheriff's office was taken care of, Nikki. And the public knowing this is huge for me, and I'm sure the public is pretty proud, and your team of people are pretty proud of what you did. Sometimes they don't see this. I have a lot of people from the employees that say, you know, we watched you guys on TV or on the channel, and then they find out stuff. And our employees love watching what's going on in Pennington County, and this is just one more positive for them to see. So I appreciate both of you guys bringing this forward.
Okay, the motion is to move to approve the new position of the sheriff's office intern at DBM B21, $18.03 an hour, and to update the position listing on file. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried on item 19. Thank you.
Thank you.
Building and grounds, I'll recognize Director Davis Purcell.
Good morning, commissioners. Davis Purcell, Buildings and Grounds Director. This morning, I'm bringing to you a lease agreement between Pennington County and Genoa Pharmacy to essentially construct a pharmacy within the Pivot Point Building that will occupy roughly 600 square feet. And we also negotiated a price of $23 per square foot per year. And if you look at prices comparative downtown, that is the very high end of what commercial lease space is going for. This will be a three-year agreement, and if it goes through, construction is about eight to 10-month timeframe. Genoma Pharmacy will be doing the construction, but will be working closely with Buildings and Grounds to, to, to go through that. So I'll stand for any questions on, on the lease, and we also have a representative from West River Mental Health if you have any questions on the pharmacy and the impact.
Chair.
Commissioner Haddock?
Thank you, Dave, for bringing this forward. This is a positive for our community and for the BMS Pivot Point. They've been looking to do this for a while, just trying to find the right person to be with them for a pharmacy and get it done. So you've worked hard to redo that building and make it available and get it done for them to move forward. Their patience, it's well needed, I'll just say that. So for me, I think it's a positive for our community and all the work that you and your team have done to get this, takes a lot of work to redo a building.
Yeah, lease agreements and lease agreements do take a lot of work, so we appreciate that.
Lease agreements and just the remodels, because I've seen, when we were doing the care campus, I seen the care campus from the bottom to the top, when they put the beams in and the second floor and all the different stuff. That was some of your team and some of the, I think it was Skull that did that remodel, I can't remember. Anyway, it's nice to see the difference, and then just one of our representatives that are in that building watching it and what can happen for what's the next step. And in this case, it's the pharmacy. So it takes a lot of work, and your team did it and helped get it done with a team of representatives for BMS, so thank you.
Thanks. Any other commissioner like to speak on this?
Probably like to hear from the representative.
Come on up. I might just add that, that, you know, I've dealt with commercial leases for 30 years, and when I saw that $23, I thought that was a really good number. And out of that, if I read the lease right, then we'd, we being the lessor would be responsible for the taxes, insurance, and the less C would be responsible for the utilities if I read the lease right.
Correct. Yes, you're correct.
And then the three-year lease, I see there's escalators in each year, which would reflect the Consumer Price Index.
Correct, yep, there's a 3% increase every year. And yeah, we negotiated that price based off of location and just the ease of access and the building being fairly new as well, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good morning, Amy Iverson, CEO, West River Mental Health, formerly BMS. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. We're really excited to have the pharmacy going into the Pivot Point Building. A lot of what we do when we're working to stabilize people that are having a mental health crisis is get them on medications or back on psychotropic medications if they've stopped taking them. And so to have a pharmacy on site will just enhance our ability to actually make that happen. We've been piecing it together the best we can over the last year to try to get people their meds, but it's been a challenge, so this will just make it a lot easier for my staff to make sure people can get access to medications because that's really what they oftentimes need in order to stabilize and get back to their life, so.
Thank you for your service, Ms. Amy. Thank you.
Yeah, I see this as a win-win for the less C and the lessor, and anyhow, I'm glad to see that's moving forward. Are there any members from the audience that'd like to speak on this? If not, I'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the lease agreement between Pennington County and G O Pharmacy.
Motion made by Commissioner Drews, can I get a second?
Second.
I got a motion by Drews, seconded by Lassiter. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is items from Director of Equalization, and I'll recognize Shannon's second in charge man.
Good morning, Gordon Wendell, Deputy Director of Equalization. We are looking for approval for an abatement for Berlin Brahma in the amount of $2,451.56 to correct an error.
Okay. Any members from the public like to speak on this? If not, back to the commission. I got a motion made by Commissioner Haddock and a second by Commissioner Lassiter. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Gordon. Next, item 21, items from the highway department, and I'll recognize Superintendent Joe Miller.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. First item up in front of you is something that you've actually seen previously when we did our annual bids. We went back to the drawing board and did a inspection of all of our pavement and reduced our quantity to get our, we were hoping to get our bid under what we had in the budget this year, and we did just that, so we would look for approval to the 2024 pavement marking contract.
Chair.
Commissioner Haddock?
So how much does it, Joe, does it cost the ranchers to put in a, or clean a, put in a cattle guard or clean a cattle guard?
We're not on the livestock guard one. This is pavement marking.
Okay, I apologize. Too busy looking at the papers. Thank you, Joe, for having that information, though. I'll move approval.
Second, a motion by Commissioner Haddock, a second by Commissioner Lassiter. Any members from the public like to speak on this? If not, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Joe. On to item 21.
21B.
21B, and that would be the Black Hills National Forest Nichols Quarry Rock Crushing Agreement.
So we, we actually originally bid this last year, and then we had a contractor failure to get this contract executed, so we did rebid it last fall for crushing aggregate of 40,000 tons in the Nichols Quarry, which is approximately about two to three miles south and west of Deerfield Lake, up there in the western Pennington County. On that, the Forest Service wanted to, they said they had $100,000, they would like to get as much material as they could for $100,000. So we put that in our bid. This is just an agreement to allow the Forest Service to pay us for that material after it's, after it's been crushed. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the agreement, number 24-RO-11020300-034 with the Black Hills National Forest Service for Nichols Quarry Rock Crushing.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Drews, a second by Commissioner Lassiter. Any members from the public like to speak on this? If not, back to the commission. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item 21C, Black Hills National Forest Livestock Guard Agreement.
This agreement is actually something that we do every year, so the Forest Service has the majority of livestock guards that are on our system or that we are responsible, that are in our roads, on our system. With that, in our cooperative road agreement, they have, you know, they agree to maintain those, pay for the cleanings, the repair, and any upgrades that we may want to do, such as you see here, the asphalt aprons that we have. So there's four livestock guard cleanings, one on Slick Prairie Road, one on Twin Springs Road, one on Playhouse, and one on South Rockerville. There's two that need, are in need of repair on South Rockerville, and a lot of times those, they've just been in there a long time, so they need rungs and stuff to be replaced. And then three asphalt installations, two on Mystic and one on Slick Prairie. And what those asphalt aprons do is they aid in not filling up those cattle guards to not be, not need to be cleaned as often. We typically go back 10 to 20 feet, so our blade operator has someplace to stop, you know, and not spill over that, the aggregate into the cattle guard, so it keeps them cleaner for a lot longer and allows for less cleaning. So with that, the Forest Service had $15,000 in their budget this year, which is up from $10,000 in years past, or, yeah, so in years past it was $10,000, so this year they added another $5,000 to that for the agreement, so allowed us to do some more work on their, on their cattle guards. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Chair.
Commissioner Haddock?
You heard my questions, Joe. Sorry, it's on the wrong one. What do we charge other people for their livestock guard, the repairs on two livestock, basically repairs on livestock guards and insulation of asphalt aprons? How much are those usually?
I don't recall, you know, the asphalt aprons, we charge at time and material upgrade. The repairs, we do for no charge because we're responsible for them.
Okay.
But with our agreement with the Forest Service, they agree to pay for those. And then the cleanings is $500 per cleaning.
Okay, and we don't install them for them, the livestock guards?
For the Forest Service?
Cleaning for four livestock guards, we don't install them for them?
No, we don't, I mean, we install cattle guards, but not for the Forest Service. They usually do their own.
I appreciate that, just so the ranchers know that we're basically charging the same price all the way through.
Yep, no, we, we actually probably charge the Forest Service a little bit more than we do with the landowners, so.
I appreciate that, Joe. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Hey, the motion is to move to approve agreement, number 24-RO-11020300-035 with the Black Hills National Forest for livestock guard work. Motion made by Commissioner Haddock, seconded by Commissioner Lassiter. Any member from the public like to speak on this? If not, back to the commission. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the same, motion carried.
Thank you, commission.
Thank you, Joe. On the item 22, and I'll recognize Construction Manager Kevin Burton. There he is.
Morning, commissioners. Gavin Burton, Construction Manager with Buildings and Grounds. What we have before you is a recommendation from the Building Committee to hire Skull Construction as our Construction Manager at Risk for the jail project. They will be instrumental in helping us through the design process, buildability, constructability, different options, estimating all of those good pieces and parts. And so the Building Committee felt that the interview panel did a good job in their recommendation and is intern recommending Skull for move forward.
Any member of the commission want to speak on this?
Chair.
Commissioner Haddock?
So we're having Skull build the tower and stuff too? Is that, I guess you're getting, and I do like Skull Construction. Andy's here. Always ask a lot of questions, Andy. So are they already bid the project?
No. So the way a Construction Manager at Risk works is they help work through the design process with us. They partner with the county to understand the subs, the product availability, constructability, the type of materials that are being used to construct. They help us find ways for efficiencies and for cost savings in material or in different design aspects, where they see the market and an architect or the county doesn't work with those people on a daily basis. And then at the end of that design phase, they go out and they bid everything, and they come back with a guaranteed maximum price. So that's what the guaranteed maximum price would be to build whatever the final design is.
So how did, okay, I'll just be up straight. How'd you get a Construction Manager at Risk? And did you put out?
We get a request for proposals publicly advertised.
That's what I needed.
Yeah. We held pre-proposal meeting, we walked the site, we talked with them, we received two proposals.
Okay.
We interviewed both of those firms, as well as a scoring sheet. They had to submit a full set of documents to us that outlined why they would be a good fit for us as a Construction Manager at Risk, and if they're willing to accept the risk part.
Okay, and then after this, then they bid the project, but not, it would be out for bid for everybody again?
No, so what they do is they bid all the subcontracts.
Okay.
And then after their role as Construction Manager at Risk, they basically roll into being the general contractor. And so they'll get all the subbids. We can vet that with them so that if they, they get a bid from a subcontractor that we've had really poor experience with.
Right.
We can say, no, we'd rather not have that person, and they can go to somebody else. So once they compile all of those subcontractors into a guaranteed maximum price, then we bring that back to the commission to approve that guaranteed maximum price.
Appreciate that. I appreciate you answering my questions, because some of the process you know, but I didn't know if we just bid it all at once and then picked a risk manager, that kind of thing, and then how we do the subcontractors and some of that. I appreciate that explanation, Kevin.
So what, what the, what this brings forth, and we were looking at this even years ago when we were talking about the infrastructure project for the jail, is that partnering with that Construction Manager really helps with, in a difficult project like this where it's in fill, we've got a lot of traffic concerns, all of that. They understand the submarket, they understand how they can coordinate their subs, they understand how to get people in and out efficiently, and so that's really where we partner with them. And then my role would be to oversee all the county's interests, make sure the jail gets what they need, reinforce cost savings for any of the taxpayers, you know, we want to try to be very fiscally responsible in that, and then just manage, be that person between the contractor and the county.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I would also ask if you, when you're doing, the county is doing interviews and stuff with people. with people, that we pick different commissioners, that way, some of us can learn some of this stuff, that I, on the building committee and different things, it's very informational, and it's very helpful to put different people than what's already, you know, your building committee already has people that are in the know. It's nice to have others on the commission that actually can get involved and see what some of the process is as well. So, just a request for the future, if we could, thank you. But what you've done and what is going on here is good, we're moving forward. And again, I'm for the jail and reconstruction of the infrastructure stuff at the jail. So, been involved before, I like learning all the stuff, like I said, and you know, because I followed you guys around in the jail projects and the, save my traps, with the care campus for me, so, thank you, Kevin.
Any other commissioner want to speak on this?
I might add, you know, when you're looking at a project of this magnitude in that thirty million dollar ranch, you really want to make sure you get this part right, because these folks are going to be looking at ways to say, you can do this better if you do it this way, you can do it cheaper if you do it this way, and cost savings could be very significant. So, you might share with the commission just who are the members of the selection committee, Kevin?
So, the, we had the building committee review the proposals, and then we had an interview committee that consisted of myself, the sheriff, Commissioner Roskinick, our risk manager, and the BKV group, the designers that were part of the project.
So, chair.
Commissioner Hancock.
I appreciate that you know stuff, Mr. Roskinick, but also I had a husband that is a project manager and been in this construction business for over, what, thirty-some years? So, I know how to cost save, I know how to ask the questions, and I like being on some of this stuff, and I appreciate that you're on the building committee, but it's good to have other people in the know of what's going on and not have the same people involved with the buildings. So, might even change some of our minds on some of the stuff that we're doing, so I appreciate that.
Are there any members of the public that'd like to speak on this particular topic? There's no motion necessary today. This item will be placed on the May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four agenda for final consideration. So, thank you, Kevin, for taking the time to present.
Sure thing.
Construction risk manager.
Have a great day.
You, too. On the item twenty-three, compensation committee, and I'll recognize highway superintendent Joe Miller.
Good morning, commission. I do have a request here in front of you, but after discussions yesterday at our compensation committee at a special meeting that we held, I would like you to actually address item twenty-four A before we go, before we address this item, because if you guys, depending on when you reschedule your budget hearings, we may not need that special meeting next week, so.
Okay, so, we're gonna?
Table this item for now, I would think.
I'll make a motion to table.
I got a motion to table. Can I get a second?
Aye.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item twenty-four. Items from commission manager. I'll recognize Holly Hanny's request to reschedule fiscal year two thousand twenty-five budget hearings. Holly?
Yes, commissioners, the initial request presented to you was to reschedule the budget hearings a day earlier to allow the three of you who are on the state executive board to attend the meeting in here on Wednesday. However, as highway superintendent Joe Miller said, the comp committee met yesterday, and the request has now shifted a bit, and as you know, they are working hard on the ongoing wage study and need just a bit more time in order to come up with a strategy for implementation. And so, we would request the board today to reschedule the two thousand twenty-five budget hearings to Monday, July eighth, and Tuesday, July ninth, please.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I got a motion by Commissioner Hancock. I'll go ahead and second the motion.
Second. Oh, you did?
You're good. So, Commissioner Hancock made the motion, Commissioner Roskinick made the second. Any discussion from the commission?
I should clarify, board, that Monday, June twenty-fourth, will start at one P. M. as there's planning commission in the morning, and then the budget hearings on Tuesday will start at eight A. M.
Chair.
Commissioner Hancock.
I'll be gone the fifteenth through the, probably the first of July, but you guys can go ahead, and then I will watch them on TV or review.
It'll be on June fifteenth?
June fifteenth through July first.
And this will be scheduling July eighth and the ninth?
Yes, that one, the next one. You talked about the June twenty-fourth and the June twenty-fifth.
And those will be canceled.
So, all of this is going on? Okay, thank you, Ms. Holly.
Yes.
So, everything's moving to the eighth and the ninth?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Holly.
Okay, so if the board would mind taking the previous item back off of the table, please? That'd be my motion.
Okay. So, move. Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hancock to remove item twenty-three.
And I second.
Okay, second by Travis. Any questions from the public? If not, back to the commission. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, and since that special meeting is no longer needed, the proper motion would be to postpone that item indefinitely, please.
So, move.
Second. Motion by Drews, seconded by Hancock. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, commissioners, item twenty-four B is the two thousand twenty-four procedures for due process for resolutions. No action is needed today, however, this is just an opportunity for the board to direct staff to prepare any resolutions for consideration for the annual convention in September, if the board has any items that they wish to address.
Okay, there's no motion necessary for this. Any discussion from the commission? If not, then we'll move on to item C, which would be South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, two thousand twenty-four elections, and second vice president, West River candidate.
Yep, this item is also just for an informational. In the past, if anybody's been interested, the board has offered a motion of support if they want to serve in that role, so it's just an informational item if anybody's interested in stepping into or running for that position, so.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Drews.
So, Holly, is this also on the agenda for the Black Hills District?
I apologize, sir, I believe it is.
Okay.
I believe it is. Because it is open for any county commissioner in the west.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good time to discuss it. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
Item twenty-five, one seventy-one Avenue section line request for designation as a no maintenance county highway, and I'll recognize Commissioner Lassiter.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, this came to my attention, there's been some issues going out on this section line for a while. Section line right of ways, as we know, many people utilize them to access public lands going through individuals' properties. I use section line right of ways to move my cattle north and south and from Caputa and Box Elder. So, once I caught wind of the stuff that was going on, I felt that it was appropriate to reach out to the highway department, figure out what would be a good way to maybe move forward from the commission's perspective, since there's been such a challenge in that area. And I will let the couple that has been most impacted, if they would like to come forward and speak on this item. Zelfer's?
Please come up and recognize yourself, please.
And while they're coming up in the package, you'll recognize, there's some pictures of hay bales on the right of way that have been placed there to prevent access along that right of way, and so, you know, what we're going to be talking about is how do we make it so that the individuals can still get out to their cattle in the most appropriate way and be protected, because there's been some tension between the neighbors out there. We also have Dwayne, I just saw him walk in, he's, Dwayne and Cody are very familiar with what's been going on out there, as well as the sheriff's department. In the package, you'll notice the sheriff's reports that are in there as well, so. All right, Mrs. Zelfer?
I don't know what you want to know.
Well, I think you should maybe just give us a little bit of your reasoning, why you think that this establishment of a no maintenance county highway would benefit you to being able to get to and from your cattle, even though it is on a section line right of way. I think the commission needs to understand what challenges you and your husband have had.
Well, this is our only access to get to the Forest Service pasture where we run our bulls, and we've been threatened numerous times. It's an everyday, ongoing thing. He will stalk us, he will follow us. It's a scary situation, and I received a letter from an airman, or, I'm sorry, staff sergeant, this morning, where he was actually threatened with the shotgun because he walked across this section line. There's police reports, last fall during deer hunting season, Mr. Bloom and his sister and brother-in-law, this young airman from Pennsylvania was parked on our side of the road on our approach, walked across this section line to go deer hunting, and they blocked him in and wouldn't let him leave. So, luckily, my husband came around the table, and he stopped to find out what was going on, and that's what the situation we've been in. And a couple of weeks ago, when cops showed up out there because of another incident for the same stuff, it wasn't ten minutes later, and he's trailing our bulls, and Mr. Bloom is following right behind them. It's a scary situation. He will feed hay on top of the section line, so either we drive over the hay, move the cows of his out of the way just to get to our animals.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lassiter.
And to kind of put it in a perspective, if it becomes a no maintenance county highway, then it kind of gives our highway department, and Joe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, or our legal team over there, it kind of gives us a little bit more authority to be able to go and move the obstructions, because they're man-made obstructions. We're supposed to be able to do that anyway, but I'll let the legal team kind of talk about that specifically.
Tyler Stobzak, Pennington County State's Attorney's Office. Since this matter has made its way on the agenda, the state's attorney's office really put their head to the paper to kind of figure out what the county's role would be in keeping this section line open for the Zelfer family. Would it be in their best interest to make this no maintenance, or does this county already have the duty to keep this section line unobstructed? Once we put our head down to the paper, we really learned that, as it currently posited, the county does have this duty to keep it open, just to kind of fill the county and or the commission a little bit more on what's happening. Oftentimes, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, it appears that there are hay bales in this section line that requires Mr., is it Zelfer?
Yes.
Zelfer to traverse around them, to stay on the section line, to go south, to get onto his cattle. As currently posited, now that we've really fleshed out our legal research, it's our belief that we, as the county, still do have this duty to keep that section line open, but with some guidance from the Duville v. Christensen case, two thousand two, South Dakota Supreme Court, it makes clear that we have, a township would have the duty to keep that section line open when there is some notice given. I don't think it's that out of the realm of possibility that that should expand to us as the county, when we receive notice to keep that section line open, that the highway department or whoever's in charge of that would be able to unobstruct that or give directions to the landowner to get those hay bales off, or whatever that obstruction may be. So, I guess that's maybe just a really roundabout way of saying, I think with the Zelfers justified concerns about keeping that section line safe and open so that they can go visit their bulls, I think there's already a remedy for us to keep that unobstructed. And essentially, I think the step to going to no maintenance is a little bit, what's the term I want to use here, unnecessary for us to step in and take the action we think that we should take. I stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lassiter.
All right, so you're saying this is not the route that should be done, that was recommended, that we at least move forward with after your research?
Right. I certainly, there's certainly nothing illegal about if we were to proceed making this no maintenance. I don't think that's legal. That being said, it does seem like a drastic step, when what we're really looking for is some, lack of a better term, policing power for us to keep that section line open. And I think through our legal research this week and just this morning, that we have the ability to keep that unobstructed and write letters, do anything necessary to the landowner to keep those hay bales off the section line.
May I interrupt you?
Yes.
It's not just the hay bales, when he's got ten-foot-tall corn in there, we can't see, you know, from gate A to gate B, and it's kind of hard to go straight, go straight on.
Understood. Well, I'm glad I looked at the laws regarding vegetation on section lines this morning, then. That ended up being great. Anyways, so, there's a great attorney general opinion that I left in the other room, I wish I brought in, that essentially discusses the role of vegetation on these section lines. When does this vegetation, corn, for example, become an obstruction, or, you know, when doesn't it? The attorney general's opinion essentially states that it becomes an obstruction, well, let me take a step back here. The landowner in this instance, Mr. Bloom, is able to, you know, plant alfalfa, corn, whatever he sees fit, but that, no, without a doubt, anybody traversing over the section line can cross over that vegetation. When it becomes an obstruction is when it really is starting to get in the way of a vehicle traveling down it. So, alfalfa, you know, it's small, really no issue there, no obstruction. The taller, the bigger it gets, the more likely it would be deemed an obstruction. So, with, you know, if we have, you know, alfalfa in there, no obstruction, but with our policing powers, if that corn really gets high and tall, then we'd be able to deem that an obstruction. Does that answer that question for you?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Lassiter.
So, if there is an obstruction, let's just, for the simplistic aspect of it, let's say hay bales, what is like, is it the Zelfers have to reach out to the highway department and say there's some obstruction, and is there a time period, is there a timeframe? Because, you know, I don't know, I don't know what all they run out there having to ask. I know they're talking about bulls, but if they got to get water access to them, or if they have an injury, how does that work for their timeframe to be able to gain access?
Sure, so, the county is essentially on the clock the moment we start to hear about it, you know, that Christensen, Duval v. Christensen case makes clear that, in that case, it was a township, that the township didn't have a, I think they called it a roving ability to go police that section line every single day, but when they get notice of something, they have to unobstruct it within a reasonable time. I don't think there's a concrete time that I've seen through the case law or through the code, but you know, that's something that, you know, maybe the folks at highway and whoever else may want to be, to maybe be involved in those discussions, to make a clear timetable for what should happen when the county gets notice of these obstructions in the section line.
Chair.
Commissioner Hancock.
So, on Frank Bloom, four-two-twenty-four, approximately ten-thirty hours, I was assigned to trespassing complaint. The reporting person, Frank Bloom, reported that Dennis Zelfer had driven across his land to access Forest Service land. Are you trying to access Forest Service land, or are you trying to access your farm or ranch or your cattle, or?
Our cattle.
I believe, to answer that, I believe Mr. Zelfer leases out Forest Service land, is that correct? So, they don't own it, but they're leasing it, and they still need access, and I believe the only access is through the section line, because it kind of borders the badlands, isn't it right? Yeah.
Okay, and there's no other access to this Forest Service land, with the Forest Service giving you basically rights to access this land besides Frank Bloom's land?
Not safely. You could do it on foot, but I'm not that ambitious.
Right. So, you can't access it any other way besides on foot, your land, to get to the Forest Service area that you guys are leasing?
Correct.
Okay. And then, what was my other question? If you make a no maintenance road, how does that make any difference than what is happening now?
Well, it would make, it would give the county less obligations, but as far as the policing power, which I really think is the crux of the issue here, I don't think that's going to solve it, so.
That's why, that's why I'm saying, if we change it to a no maintenance road, here's the problem, with ranchers trying to go one after the other to try to make a no maintenance road. a no-maintenance road and try to access your property, you have every right on a, on a section line or a no-maintenance road to access your property. I don't think you're going to solve it here. I think you're going to solve it in court. And for me, to get involved to make it a no-maintenance road or, or leave it like it is at this point, I could do either one for you, but I'm going to guess that your bottom line is you're going to go and you're going to have to go to court and, and figure out that he can't obstruct, if he's obstructing your property, and fight it out in court. But I, I appreciate you coming forward on this, but I just think for us to do a no-maintenance road and do that's not going to help you any more than leaving it like it is.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lassiter.
I, I think our State's Attorney's Office just advised us well enough that we can do what we thought we needed to have it as a no-maintenance road to be able to do. There was some question about what we could do as just a section line right-of-way. I think his research has shown that we do have the right to go and clear it, which is one of the questions that came up when we were talking about the no-maintenance road. We, the easiest we thought was to make it a no-maintenance road so that we have the, the police powers to go and clear it. However, as our State's Attorney's done researched and verified, we can do that now currently with it still being a section line. So I, I agree, we don't have to move it into a no-maintenance highway, no-maintenance road. We can actually keep it the way it is. And then the Zelfers have to be very adamant on following those complaints to the county so that those, that, that section line right-of-way can be cleared. So seeing that we've got some new information, I'm absolutely fine with the way it is now that we understand it. And our highway department's aware of everything as well.
Thank you, Travis.
So.
My take on this is that we all know what, I think we all know that a section line is a 66-foot public right-of-way and you can use it for access, ingress, you can use it for utilities. And if we did nothing today, it doesn't change it. It is what it is. You have every right. My only question was, is that do we have a rough idea what the boundaries of that section line is? So that seems to me that if you use the section line, you just want to make sure that you're on the section line. And so I don't know if there's fences or if it's just a trail that everybody assumes that trail is within the section line.
So right along my thought process, as we were talking about this earlier, it might be of due diligence for you guys to get that section line surveyed and maybe some, either some T-post or something put up so you have references to where you're at so you don't risk trespassing outside of that 66 feet, right? That way you know for a fact you are on that section line. It'd just be due diligence for yourself to make sure that the, you know, you know where you're at. Frank knows where it's at. The county highway knows where it's at, right? There's no question at that point.
Chair.
Commissioner Haddcock.
I agree with Joe. That's going to protect you of where it is exactly on there because it's 33 on each side. I don't know if Frank can vacate that, his 33, we've done it, I thought, before, but.
He normally would be able to, ma'am, but he can't in this instance because it leads to Forest Service land. So.
Thank you, sir. And then the other thing is, is if you look in the county, unfortunately, folks, you probably have a bunch of ranchers and farmers and people using those section lines. But hopefully, they're getting along with their neighbors so they can get through. So like I said, I, I support your ag, I support your, your industry, what you do, but I think you got one honorary man, and he already knows, I called him that before, Frank Bloom, that you're going to be dealing with. There's got to be some kind of solution with him understanding that you need to get to your access and the only way you could do is walk. So I would hope he'd have a little bit more understanding of that and you wouldn't have to fight it out in court. Because again, you need to access your land. But like I said before, you're trying to have a county kind of take care of this. And I don't think we're going to be able to through a no section, or no-maintenance road. But yeah, I, I can, I can see where you're having a few issues and understand the person you're talking about. So he's been good to me, but I know he's honorary. So I would hope he would change his heart a little bit and let you get to your, get to your cattle. So.
He doesn't want the deer hunters walking across there, though.
Yeah. Sometimes that's scary for people. They don't know, not scary, but you guys are pretty protective out there of your land and your, your property. And if you don't know that somebody's walking on your property or even by your property, I'm pretty sure he's not the only rancher farmer that probably came up on somebody with protecting their property, sir. So.
With that said, we appreciate you taking the time to join us today. I would ask that you keep, keep a surprise on the situation and hopefully it improves after today.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
On item 26, that would be items from the public. Per South Dakota Code, codified law 1-25-1, which a speaker request form is required. This is a time for the members of the public to discuss and express concerns of the Board of Commissioners on policies and issues affecting the county government and its function. Action will not be taken during this time on any issues brought forth that are not properly noticed. Speaker, under speakers under this item will be recorded in the minutes by name and the area of interest. And I do have one.
But I don't believe he's here anymore.
I have one request, and that would be, looks, Joseph Bishop?
Bishop Joseph.
What's that?
It's Bishop Joseph, but I believe he, he is no longer here.
Okay, then.
Anybody know? Somebody want to, Sheriff, if you want to see if Bishop Joseph is out there? Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
I would take a motion for a 10-minute recess.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll move on to item 27. That'd be items from planning and zoning. And at this time, I'll recognize Director Brittany Molitor. Brittany?
Good morning, Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following two items. Item A is preliminary plan CO PPL 24-0006 for Lynn and Jody Jensen to subdivide and create slot 1, 2, and 3 of Nebraska Placer MS 676 subdivision. And the Planning Commission recommended approval of CO PPL 24-0006 with five conditions. And item B is preliminary plan CO PPL 24-0005 for Charles and Jenny Hansen to subdivide and create lot A of Sam's addition. And Planning Commission recommended approval of CO PPL 24-0005 with seven conditions.
Thank you, Brittany. Are there any members from the audience who'd wish to remove any items that, on today's consent agenda? If not, back to the commission. Any commissioner want to remove any item from the consent agenda? If not, I would ask for a recommendation.
Sure.
Motion.
I move to approve the planning and zoning consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I got a motion by Drew, second, and by Commissioner Lassiter. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Onto item C.
Item C is public hearing of ordinance amendment OA 24-03 for Pennington County to amend Section 319 Vacation Home Rental of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance. And the Planning Commission recommended to continue ordinance amendment 24-03 to the May 21st, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting.
So moved. I got a motion by Commissioner Lassiter, a second by Commissioner Haddcock. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. On the item D.
Item D is public hearing of ordinance amendment OA 24-04 for Pennington County to amend Section 511 fees of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance. And Planning Commission recommended to continue OA 24-04 to the May 21st, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion by Drews, a second by Commissioner Lassiter. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany. Onto item 28, items from the chair, commission members. We'll start with Commissioner Lassiter, and we'll just combine committees and any other meetings that we've done since the last commission meeting.
Well, most of the time from the last commission meeting to this one, I was out of town at a conference. The only thing that is significant that I was part of is post the town hall meeting with the EPA. I've helped them with a survey to all those that were involved. And once I get the results of that survey, I'll bring it here and present it to the board. Okay?
Commissioner Drews?
Okay. Well, we had an MPO meeting. One of the things that's before them right now is the draft report of the Pennington County Master Transportation Plan. So at some point in time, maybe, maybe after this it's approved, we'd ask Joe Miller to come in and give us a full report on that. But other than that, there wasn't anything else really too major relative to that. And there's a couple of other functions that really aren't part of this. I don't think there's anything, anything really to report to the commission on it. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Get ready. Commissioner Haddcock?
Yes. Actually, with Pennington, Pennington County housing, most of it was about the building that got ran into by three individuals. And the process said how much the staff and the first responders did a great job at helping us. And that is getting done. We also got our people moved back in, into that building, which was a lot of work for our staff. So I commemorate our staff and our CEO, Brian Akbach. We also talked about the review of the scattered housing for Black Hills Workshop, looks like that, that is moving forward. Planning Commission, you saw what we were doing. There's a lot of discussion on vacation home rentals still. So they're going to review that again on their healthcare trust board, it sounds like, with Trevor, he's moving forward. He, it sounds like you got a really good deal for the employees on eye care. We also talked about the deductions for employees and what was going to happen next because of the 11% increase and what that's going to look like for the future, maybe 7%. Also, at that meeting, I would hope that people in the future, when they speak about other people on that and being taped, would be respectful to what they're saying about others and what other people think is funny. Some other people don't. So I would hope that we would keep that in mind for the future. I think that's a good board. I think they work very hard. So that's about it.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I agree relative to the Pennington County housing redevelopment. Brian and his, his staff did an excellent job getting Memorial Park up and running. And in the interim, they, they were able to find temporary housing in the hotel next door. They did an amazing job. Some of the other meetings and committees would be, on the 18th, I attended the Hill City Economic Development Corporation meeting. And on the 20th, I did, as part of the presentation at the South Dakota School of Mines, I'm, presentation put on by Elevate, relative taxation presentation. On the 23rd, I did the building committee. And the building committee, we basically just did updates on, on the jail project and 900 concourse. On the 23rd, I also attended the bench and tree dedication, which was well-attended. And I would say, I think it was very well-recognized by the folks that were there at the, at that dedication. 24th, I did the weed and pest monthly meeting, and we just got an update on where Scott is and on getting ready for the summer activities. 25th, Black Hills, Wisconsin, local governments, probably the only item that we went in the depth there was, you know, they, we know that, how they do their rates at, I think, 52 cents per population. And now they're talking, how do they do the annual increase? So there was some discussion on, on that particular topic. 27th, I attended the Hill City Area Chamberlain Meeting that was held at the Diamond Spur Events Center. That was well-attended. On the 2nd of May, I, I did an inspection with the Planning, Zoning, Enforcement Director, Dwayne, and a deputy from the Sheriff's Department. We went up and inspected the site that the neighbors been complaining about. I talked to Brittany and she's going to put a report together so that I can get back with the, with the group that live in that area. But it certainly appears to me that it's more of a civil matter and, and I don't think the county's got, shouldn't be involved with that particular issue. On the 2nd, I also attended Hill City Housing Trust Fund Meeting. And what that is, is there's three communities that have gone and set up a, a trust fund. And I, I believe it's Hot Springs, Hill City, and Spearfish. But what, what that does, it puts us in a position that there's $20 million out there that would earmark for Black Hills Community Affordable Housing. Right now, I think that money's being held by Hillsworth Authority. But if you don't, we're working with Black Hills Area Community Foundation, and they help us, they're helping us put this trust together. And hopefully there'll be some funds available at the end of the year. On the 3rd, I attended Jerry Coop's funeral, which was very well-attended. We're going to miss Jerry. He was a real asset to the Black Hills, Black Hills, Foxborough, and Central State Fair. And let's see.
Chair, I forgot some of my stuff, too. When you have a minute.
You'd want to speak, Deb?
Are you done first?
Oh, no, I got it. I was just trying to figure out if this is a personal meeting or county meeting the next one.
You're good.
I'm going to move on to the, yesterday we did the Pennington County Jail tour, Travis and I did. And when you get down into that jail and you really get into the heart of it, you can really see some of the failing infrastructure. You can see exposed wires, a lot of the sealant tile staying from various, various liquids dripping down on it. So seeing is believing. So I appreciate being able to have the opportunity to do that. And then yesterday afternoon, I met with Representative Dennis Crowe and former county assessor, Rob Miller. Dennis is still trying to figure out how, he wants to do a presentation in South Dakota Department of Revenue, and he just wants to make sure that he's got his ducks in a row. He's talked to our county assessor and, and he just wanted to reconfirm that with Rob, who was the pres, who was the former assessor before Shannon, just to make sure that he was getting the same information from the two sources. And that's all I have.
Thank you. So I also went to the Elevate Rhapsody Property Tax Forum. I knew they're doing a summer study, but I also encouraged on the April 2nd meeting of '23, 2023, for a lot of the legislators to look how property taxes go up and how property taxes are formulated. Because on April 2nd is when Shannon did our presentation, a really good presentation. A lot of that has to do with budgets. If budgets rise, he set it right up straight, that when budgets rise, so do property taxes. It's not based on a levy to a certain extent. It has to do with city, county, and schools raising their budgets. So I would hope that we have learned something from this last year. And that if we're going to tell people about the summer study, that we should also tell them that if you're $10, $11 million over your budget, and all of us are in the schools, cities, and counties, over their budgets, what's going to raise their property taxes is those budgets. What they can do about it and how they keep affecting and bringing this forward is, they're coming up with ideas of eliminating property tax. Well, that's the most sustainable tax because you start doing sales tax only. I took a class with Shannon, and that's a good way for some of the states and some areas that went bankrupt because of it. So if you're going to take away our property tax, or you're going to lower our property tax, or you're going to spend or take stuff off the tax rolls, you're going to start affecting our bottom line. So that's what I have talked to the legislators about. Most of it's about the budget. How much you spend. And Shannon was. much you spend, and Shannon was up straight on April second, uh, this year. I encouraged, uh, people to go to that website on the county video and watch it, because that's what it's about, is budgets. Number two was, um, the Rapid City Vision Fund, I've been involved with that for a while, talked to some of the staff, some of the, uh, people that are involved with that, and I'll keep saying, infrastructure is huge, take care of our infrastructure in Rapid City. Um, I know for a fact that Joe, our highway department superintendent and their staff do a great job at roads and bridges and different things, but they also need to put some money towards that, even though I believe in projects and, and other things as well, but the roads really need some help, and the water and sewer in the different areas in Rapid City are huge as well. I just put my input in that way. Um, and then Jerry Cope, I attended his funeral, and I've known Jerry Cope way before the fair board, and I'll just tell you, Jerry Cope and Lori Cope are amazing human beings. They are, they have been leaders in this community for a while. Um, they always have a kind word, they're good at communicating and always have been, um, with everything they've done, and Jerry, um, and I've said it upfront here, Jerry has just been one of those amazing people that, when you communicate with Jerry, he's always nice, he's always kind, and he always has something that he will bring you back for a solution. Um, he was one of the best leaders, I thought, of the, uh, our county fair, uh, board because of his communication and because of just his leadership skills that he showed, so, um, we're gonna be, uh, missing Jerry, uh, very, very much at the fairgrounds, but I just think, not only at the fairgrounds, but in this leadership for our community and our state, so.
I totally agree.
Uh, next would be item thirty, and that's approval of the vouchers for four million, or excuse me, four hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. So the first motion would be to move the voucher for the Red Rose, Rose N LLC in the amount of two hundred and twenty dollars with Deb abstaining.
I'll abstain.
That'd be my motion?
I got a motion by Master, and a second by Drews, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried with Deb abstaining. Uh, motion number two, move to approve the remaining vouchers in the amount of four hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-four cents.
So moved.
Motion by Lester, second by Drews, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Uh, I would take a motion to go into executive session pursuant to S D L C one-dash-twenty-five-dash-two.
Bang it.
Motion by Haddcock, second by Lassiter, all in favor.
Aye.
Indicate by saying aye, opposed, motion carried.
There you go. Move to command of executive session.
Got a motion by Haddcock to come out of executive session, a second by Lassiter, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.